Good evening. We should like to call this Fairfield City Council Housing Authority meeting to order, please, for September 19th. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bertani?
Here.
Councilmember Moy is absent. Councilmember Vicaro is absent. Vice Mayor Tim?
I'm here.
And Mayor Price.
Here. And the invocation this evening, if you would, Councilwoman Bertani, would you lead us, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. God in heaven, we thank you for another opportunity to meet, to do the business of your good people of Fairfield, California. We pray that you bless us with the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to do what it is that this community most needs. And we pray for communities that are suffering, that are ravaged by weather events that seem not to let up. Can you imagine what it would feel like to be in Florida or in Texas right now with everything that you owned gone? Pray for those people. Pray for those people, but because, but for the grace of God, there go we. So, we thank you for this community. We thank you for the leadership. We thank you for our awesome police and fire departments, for our great city manager and staff. And we thank you, most importantly, for the people that make this city what it is. Now, we pray all this in the name of Jesus Christ and by His authority. We declare it done. Amen.
And the pledge of allegiance this evening will be led by Scout Troop 8271 from the city of Fairfield, and their leader is Ken, Ken Burns. Gentlemen, would you come forward, please? Thank you, gentlemen. And these are students from Beagle Wilson as well as Grange. And we are delighted to have them with us this evening, and we appreciate the parental support that they receive, not only from scout leaders, but also from families. So, thank you very much. We turn now to council reports. Mr. Vice Mayor, would you like to begin, please?
Yeah, just real briefly, I just wanted to give a shout out. I know the city manager had asked me about PAL, and it completely slipped my mind. But, yeah, we were at the PAL Benefit Dinner last week, and, and I just wanted to give a shout out to the Police Department, to PAL, to the people that put it together, and the students that showed up, again, from Solano College with, with the sales of the tickets, and then the actual, some students from PAL. And it was, it was well done. And I didn't, there were some people missing, and, and I had a hard time figuring out why. Well, I found out there were competing dinners going on at the same time. So, you know what? I think we, we split it, and it worked out. But, but again, I just wanted to say well done to the students, the Police Department, and PAL. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bertani, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening and for watching from home. I'll give a shout out, too. Also related to PAL, I'm going to shout out my Rotary team, our Cordelia Rotary Club. We will be having a Halloween-ish type dinner for our PAL students on October the 26th, a couple of days before Halloween. October the 26th at PAL, we will be serving up some delicious lasagna and fixins to get all of our PAL students ready to do some serious trick-or-treating on the 31st. So, I just want to thank Rotary, not just the Cordelia Rotary, but the Rotary Foundation for being awesome and doing meaningful work in this community. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
That's a good one. Thank you very much. And I should just like to report very quickly that the Levin celebrated its ninth gala this year over in Napa, and it was hosted by the mayors of Vallejo, Vacaville, Napa, and of course Fairfield. And what an incredibly successful evening it was, and it just goes to illustrate how much the people who live in this part of California really do care about our students. It was a wonderful evening, and so excited that the city manager and his family were there, too. So, thank you very much. And then we will be adjourning this meeting, this evening, in honor of the oldest resident of Fairfield who passed away last Thursday. She was 106 years old, just shy of 107. Very vibrant lady, Cassie Heron. And that service will be in Vallejo on Saturday. Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
If you, if I may, I'd like to fill up your social calendar here with many, many wonderful events. So, starting this Wednesday, September 20th, from 6:30 to 8:30, as part of our monthly community education forum sponsored by the Police Department, there will be a forum this Wednesday on crime prevention through environmental design. So, this is just a reminder that throughout the year, the department has brought forward a lot of great programs for the community, ranging from dispatch to what to do when there's an active shooter event. And so, this continues in that series. This Saturday, and for Sunday, too, there's a couple of things going on. So, this Saturday, our Police Department will be having an open house here at City Hall Complex. So, it'll be a chance to come out and experience what the Police Department does. We will have folks out here actively recruiting. So, if you're interested in a profession in law enforcement, I definitely encourage you to come out. And then Jelly Belly will be hosting the annual Candy Palooza Saturday and Sunday over at Jelly Belly. And then, last but not least, next Friday, September 29th, partnership with Dutch Brothers, every drink you purchase, $1 will be donated to PAL. So, I want to encourage the community out to come and get caffeinated and help us support a wonderful, wonderful organization. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Are there any changes, additions, deletions to the agenda this evening?
No changes at all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, your report, please.
I don't have a report, but I'm just supposed to remind any speakers to please speak directly into the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you. And we turn now to process for public comments, please, Madam Clerk.
Speakers may address items on this agenda at the time each item is considered. Under public comments, the public may speak on items not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the city council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items except as authorized by law. Off-agenda items from the public will be taken under consideration without discussion by the council and may be referred to staff. To speak on an agenda item, please complete a speaker's card and give it to me at the latest prior to the time for public comment on that item. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to four minutes with one minute to summarize their remarks. Thank you.
And our first speaker will be Jeff Trager, to be followed by John Height, please.
Members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, very quickly, just want to bring up to date that the Sweeney Todd at the Downtown Theater has gotten off to a roaring start, and I've heard nothing but great reports about it. But tonight, I just want to make a, I want to bring to attention that my friend Margarita Lopez here, we've been putting on a, an event called Pinkfest, and started here in Fairfield, and we've had to move it because of strains, constraints of timing and not being able to get the different venues that we wanted. So, we're going to do this at Mare Island on the 1st of October. And this is our fifth event, started here on the corner over here, five years ago. And it's, and it's built, and it's built, and it's really become something special. And I want to, I'm sure a lot of you know Margarita, and I'd like for her to say a few words, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Thank you, everybody. I'd just like to say how excited I am. This is our fifth year producing Pinkfest. Pinkfest is a concert, as you all know, or don't know. Now you know. It's a concert, and we have information for people who are starting their journey with cancer in our community. It benefit, benefits Pink Lemonade. Pink Lemonade is a local foundation that helps cancer patients and their families while they're going through treatment with simple things that we all unfortunately take for granted, and it's a big help to our members of our community who are going through their journey. I'd like to invite you all. It's October 1st. We're going to have it. We're keeping it in Solano County, Mare Island at Vino Godfather from 12 to 5. We'll have food, music, vendors, and it's really a lively time for everybody who attends. We do have a lot of survivors who go, and many times, they are people who usually don't get to go out and enjoy a beautiful day with music. And this is kind of a safe place for them to go because they'll, they know it's for them, it's about them, it's to benefit them and their families. So, I encourage you to join us. I have tickets. So, if you can't join us, or if you'd like to buy tickets for somebody else, please let me know. I typically sell some tickets for people who want to donate them to survivors, and then they could bring a caretaker. What else can I say? I appreciate everybody's support. I look forward to seeing you there. As a survivor myself, stage four cancer in, currently still in treatment. People don't know this, but treatments right now are, medical advances are amazing. It's important to stay positive. And I hope to see you all there. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Margarita. Thank you, Jeffrey. John Height, to be followed by our final speaker, Serena Anger, please.
Hello, I'm John Height. I just have to brief aside here. It's been an absence of 25 years since I've spoken here. I bring that up just because I was one of the original members of the 2020, Vision 2020 Committee from 1988 to 92. You spend a lot of time here. I'm not here talking about 2020, certainly, although we're getting close. I'm here on behalf of businesses at the end of Horizon Drive in the Western Business Park. We met with Councilman Vicaro about three weeks ago to discuss, Public Works was thinking of putting some sort of barrier in the cul-de-sac in front of our businesses to prevent people coming down and spinning donuts and twirling, or whatever they like to call it. I don't know. We did have a case where a car did go out of control and actually did strike the, the Heretic Brewery at one time, and certainly could have injured people. So, there's a number of our businesses at the end of that cul-de-sac. And Public Works had come to us and said that they were, were going to place some kind of a flat rubber barrier or something in the cul-de-sac that would allow the trucks to drive over it, but would prevent the cars from doing the spinning. They sent us all, all the landowners or property owners and the businesses, I assume. I'm kind of both, so I wouldn't know which. Notification that they were going to do that, and no one objected, and it just kind of fell flat. Nothing happened. And I think what happened was the owner of the Heretic Brewery and probably the landlords of some of the buildings contacted Mr. Vicaro, and he met with us and said, "Well, we just kind of need to get our police..." I don't know Officer Matt's last name. I know he's been very good at tracking these people down at, at times. He met with us that night, too. And I don't even know if I'm really in the right place to bring this up, but Councilman Vicaro, he actually thought this meeting was on September 5th. So, he might be still thinking he's going to that one. There might be ways not here tonight. So, anyway, I'm just here to speak on behalf of the property and, and business owners there. And we're all for having that barrier put in. We're told it could be done basically in about one day at fairly limited expense. And there's no objections from the property owners. Thank you.
And John, thank you very much for serving on Vision 2020. It was quite an experience. And our final speaker, then, Serena Anger, please.
Mayor, if I may comment, John, you're at the, you're absolutely at the right spot. So, if you could just meet Julie Lucido, our Assistant Public Works Director. We actually have Garland, we've directed him, just so you know, to go back out and re, reach out to all the businesses again. So, I think there was some, we want to start the reach-out process again, so.
The Councilman of Garland.
Yes. So, we definitely want to work with you to get a solution. So, if you just introduce yourself to Julie, she'll make sure she gets all your contact.
Just one more, please.
And John, I was going to tell you, I think it's Sergeant Matt Thomas. I spoke with him the other day, and he was sitting out there. And just so you know it, some kid came out and started doing donuts and, well, after they towed the car. And, I mean, it'll be an expensive lesson, so. But, he's brought up your problem, and Julie will take care of you. But, but anyway, I'll let, the chief's right there. So, he'll know Sergeant Matt Thomas doing a pretty good job. Thank you, sir.
Serena, please.
Good evening, city council members. I'm Serena Anger, the library supervisor at the Fairfield Civic Center Library. And I wanted to give you a little update on where we are this fall. We're branching out with several downtown outreach programs, and we hope to promote our downtown neighbor businesses and expand library programming to non-traditional library users. Last night, we served as guest host at the newer Crush Wine Bar and Restaurant with a second trivia night, and customers could enjoy challenging questions in a relaxed atmosphere. And we even had a repeat couple that had been dating, and they decided it would be nice to come back. Tomorrow, on the 20th, we will be hosting a new book club called Book Pub at Luigi's Deli here on Texas. And each month, genres such as mystery, horror, and science fiction will rotate to allow customers to discuss their genre themes and favorite books, movies, and TV shows. And no books are needed. They'll just kind of, we provide the conversational starters. And we're hoping to reach out to millennials and others who may not traditionally use the library and maybe bring them into the physical building at some point. But we want to reach out to them, too. Since April, once a month, we brought computer assistance to the Fairfield Adult Recreational Center, and it was nice to see it in the Parks and Rec calendar. And it's been a really popular program where folks 50 and up can get assistance with their phones and laptops in a kind of peer supportive environment. And we've expanded it to the Sassoon Senior Center once a month starting in August. And we had 20 people show up. So, it's a good, good thing. We're also going out to challenge eighth graders with reference questions and storytime techniques at the Inspire Career Fair on October 3rd, held by the school district at the Crox Center. And we'll be signing up residents for library cards and promoting our free museum pass program called Discover and Go at the Solano Family Justice Center's Health Fair on October 7th. And also to let everyone know, starting in October through November, we've teamed up with the Food Bank of Solano and Contra Costa County to promote our Discover and Go Museum Pass program and the Food Bank. And all of our library branches will have food barrels. So, people are encouraged to bring donated wrapped food and wrapped beverages, and the Food Bank will pick those up. And you can enter in for a raffle for prizes and learn more about our free museum pass program. Well, we wish you all a successful fall, and thank you for your time.
And Serena, Andrew Carnegie would love what you're doing in downtown Fairfield.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The heart of Fairfield is beginning to breathe, a little life into town now, too. So, thank you for including the library.
And we teamed up with Cheyenne Soul for African American Heritage Month this past February, too, and they did a nice presentation on healthful cooking, and we might have them back again if they're willing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll convene the meeting of the Housing Authority, please. Roll call. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Commissioner Bertani?
Here.
Commissioners Moy and Vicaro are absent. Vice Chairman Tim?
Here.
And Chairman Price.
Here.
Thank you.
And the consent calendar, please. We just have the one item, Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the authority or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
And the one item is Housing Authority Resolution 2017-07, the Fairfield Housing Authority adopting utility allowance increase for Housing Choice voucher and project-based programs effective December 1st, 2017. Is there a motion to approve? Been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Bertani. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll reconvene the city council meeting. And again, consent calendar, please, Madam Clerk.
All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
And I don't have any request to speak cards, so anyone choosing to speak on the consent calendar should do so now, seeing none, we'll open the... Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as submitted? Been moved by Councilwoman Bertani, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Such efficiency this evening. We turn then to public hearing, item number seven, please, Madam Clerk.
Public Hearing and Resolution 2017-222 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield approving the submission of the Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report for Fiscal Year 2016 to 2017 to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And our presenter is Sandy Valentine.
Welcome, Sandy.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, City Council members, and members of the community. My name is Sandy Valentine, and I am with the Community Development Department. I'm here this evening to present the Final Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, or CAPER for short, which details the use of community development block grant funds and summarizes the accomplishments of the various activities for the reporting period of June, July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017. Adoption of this resolution will ensure that the city is in compliance with HUD regulations and continue to receive CDBG entitlement funding. The city, uh, hold on, one, two minutes. The, the city received $743,763 awarded by HUD for fiscal year 2016-17. Funds were split into three areas. Non-public services received 65% of entitlement, or $483,446. Non-public services provided services to the neighborhood revitalization area and to the housing rehab activities. Public service received 15%, of entitlement, or $111,564, which that funds activities through nonprofits. The administration fee is 20% of entitlement, or $148,753, which helps fund city staff time. So, this slide shows a brief overview of some of our CDBG activities for fiscal year 2016-17. When council approved these activities last year, this is what was able to be accomplished with some of the dollars that were awarded to us. As far as quality of life services, the Levin Tutoring Center received $11,156. The Levin After School and Summer Program for, is an after-school and summer program for very low-income residents of The Groves, Grande Circle, Parkway Gardens, Dana Drive, and Phoenix Drive. There were approximately 119 children who had a place to go after school in a safe and productive environment. For Meals on Wheels, they received $11,156 and provided a total of 47,521 meals to seniors 60 and older in the city of Fairfield. Many of those served were homebound seniors and/or disabled persons who would otherwise not be able to have a meal or see anyone for days. There are volunteers at Meals on Wheels who are the only person that some of these seniors get to see for many days. Our Heather House Homeless Shelter received $33,469. And Heather House provides 24 beds and served approximately 112 people that would otherwise have been homeless. Our housing rehabilitation program received $200,000, and those entitlement funds were available to eligible lower-income homeowners to maintain and upgrade single-family and multifamily homes in older neighborhoods, such as HVAC services, roof replacement, exterior painting, dry rot repairs, and many other activities. There were approximately 14 loans and grants that were approved for fiscal year 2016-17 under this rehab program. Without housing rehab funds, these homeowners rehab funds, these homeowners would not have been able to afford these repairs that this program helped with. For community safety and infrastructure, there was $139,633 that went into this program. This program provided the installation of street lighting, closed-circuits TVs, cameras, and license plate readers, which were placed in various low-income areas throughout Fairfield. These activities helped improve safety for many residents, improved quality of life, assisted law enforcement, and helped reduce crime in the community. As part of the neighborhood revitalization grant that council chose to expand this year, made it possible to expand some of these projects. With our revolving loan fund, $193,000 was used to, for two small business loans, which were provided towards economic growth in the downtown area. The approval of the CAPER is a requirement, a requirement by HUD as part of the five-year consolidated plan, which is why I am here this evening. The CAPER is to ensure that we have met the statutory goals indicating that we are spending our dollars on the required statutory goals that are required. They are decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities. My request tonight is that you approve the resolution for the CAPER for fiscal year 2016-2017, and I am here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any comments or questions for Sandy? Councilwoman Bertani, please.
One quick question. The revolving loan fund provided two small business loans for economic growth for, in the amount of $193,000. What were those two businesses?
There were two businesses downtown, downtown, which are restaurants.
What, what are the businesses?
Um, gosh, I can't remember the names of the, of the businesses offhand.
I believe one is, I think the name's gonna be The Clay Oven. It's an Indian restaurant that's under construction right now, and then the other one is gonna be Belavita, which is relocating from North Texas Street to the empty space next to Pieces of Time, too.
Nice. And, and was that just basically half and half, or?
It was, right.
Okay. Thank you. That's my question.
Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you, Sandy. If you'd stand by, please. I'll open the public hearing. Don't have any request-to-speak cards. Anyone choosing to speak on this item should do so now. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2017-222, please. Been moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second, please? Seconded by Councilwoman Bertani. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We don't have any other business this evening. This is our shortest one in quite some time. Thank you very much for being with us and scouts. We appreciate your leading us. Thank you.